We are streaming to YouTube and I'm recording the Zoom session. And we are ready to go live.
Box six, we get started. Okay, hello and welcome everyone to this special meeting on August 23rd, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Goethos.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
All right, due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on when signed on to the Zoom call, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment for that specific item. Okay, so we, in this special meeting, we only have one item on the agenda and it is a public hearing. It is transition to district based elections for council members. And this is public hearing number one. And I'm going to hand things over to staff and Mr. Paul Mitchell from our consulting company to present to us.
I think, yeah. I'm going to get started here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, looks great.
All right, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the City Council. Drew Corbett, City Manager, I'm here with Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners. And as the mayor mentioned, this is the first public hearing for our transition to district elections. So by way of background, in May, the city received a demand letter alleging that our current at-large council election system was in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. In June, council adopted a resolution of intent to transition to by-district elections. Last month, in July, council approved the transition schedule with a goal to complete the process by November 15th of 2021. And then tonight, council is hosting the first of five public hearings on the process. And our first by-district city council elections would be scheduled for November 2022. In terms of our virtual public hearing schedule, there are five public hearings, the first one being tonight. And tonight will be input from communities of interest. So we're not going to be doing any map drawing during this public hearing or during public hearing number two, which will be on September 13th. So three weeks from tonight will be our second public hearing on getting input from communities of interest. And we'll also be requesting direction be provided on the district composition, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a few slides. Public hearing number three will be on September 30th. And that will be review and feedback of the proposed draft maps and the election sequencing. Public hearing number four will be a review and final direction on the revised draft map and election sequencing. And that meeting will occur on October the 14th. And public hearing number five will be the introduction of the ordinance. And that will be on November 1st. And at that point, there will be no more, no more changes to the map. And then if all that moves along as anticipated on November the 15th, on the consent calendar, we'll have an adoption of the ordinance to move to district elections. So in addition to the public hearings that we're having, we're also having some in-person community workshops. We held our first series of workshops this past Saturday, the 21st. Both of them were on getting input from communities of interest. The first one was held at 10:00 AM in the main library. And the second one, which was hosted in Spanish, was at 2:00 PM at the King Center. On September 25th, we have another community workshop and that will be input on the map drawing. So the maps will be available after the public hearing on September the 13th. So a couple of weeks after that, we'll get our first series of community input on map drawing. And that will occur at 2:00 PM on the 25th at the main library. On October 2nd, we're going to host two more meetings to get input on the map drawing. The first one is scheduled at 9:30 AM at the Congregational Church and it will be hosted in Spanish. And then the second one will be at 1:00 PM that day at the Senior Center. So ever since this process began, staff's been working really hard on outreach and engagement. I think undertaken a pretty significant effort to make sure people are aware of the transition to district elections and trying to get people involved with our communities of interest process, which is going on right now. We have our own website set up, www.cityofsanmateo.org/districtelections. With, that has a significant amount of information on the process and the timelines. We've been doing a multilingual campaign. We've had digital and print materials. We sent print mailers to all residential addresses. We've been sending emails out to our listservs and to registered voters. We've been doing flyer distribution, pop-up outreach and leveraging our community partners, faith organizations, schools, youth groups, neighborhood groups and more. So we'll continue to do this throughout the duration of the process in an effort to get as much community engagement as possible on this important process. And in terms of composition and number of districts, you know, as we're transitioning to a by-district election, state law does allow council to consider a number of options. It can be by district in five, seven or nine districts. Or it can be by districts in four, six or eight districts with an elective mayor that could serve either a two-year or a four-year term. And so again, those are just state law. We are not making any recommendations at this point. This is our first stop on trying to get some official feedback from the community about their thoughts on the composition and number of districts. This is just simply what the state law permits in terms of what we're able to do as we transition to district elections. So tonight, we'll receive public input and begin the discussion. And ideally, we'll get final direction on the number of districts sought in public hearing number two on September 13th. Because that will be really critical as we start to release the map drawing tool that people know whether, whether we're going to be continuing with five elected officials or if we'll be moving to seven or nine. The number of districts in the election sequencing will be incorporated into an ordinance that would be considered by council for adoption. So this ordinance does not need to go to the voters. With that said, we are a charter city and our charter currently calls for five at-large council members and a rotating mayor. So if we increase the number of seats and/or if we change to a directly elected mayor, that would require a charter amendment at a future election. So something to consider as we move forward. And then finally, I'm going to, at this point, turn things over to Paul Mitchell with Redistricting Partners. They are our professional demographer that is assisting with our process. And Paul is going to present on the district formation criteria.
I just, to the mayor, before you proceed. It is that if you go to district elections from at-large for the five council members, that requires nothing to be done with the charter?
Oh, I can take that question. Though that's correct. And the reason for that distinction is because compliance with the CBRA is required by state law and by case law in any event, regardless of what our charter says. So the transition from at-large to by-district elections, if you keep it at five seats with a rotational mayor, would not require a charter amendment to be approved by the voters as a prerequisite to moving to district elections. Now, having said that, I think a cleanup charter amendment is appropriate at a future election or to align the charter with our process and with the CBRA. But you would not need a charter amendment in that circumstance in order to complete the transition.
A follow-up question I have on that. Is there any, if we do change significantly what we move on from what we have now, what is the timeline as to when we would have to go back to the voters?
Sure. So if, for example, the council wished to have a directly elected mayor or to increase the number of seats, charter amendment could potentially be put before the voters at the June 2022 statewide primary election.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, you're...
Thank you so much, Prasanna. What happens if, in some scenario, the ballot measure fails?
That is a very good question. So I think in that circumstance, we'd have to likely just revisit the issue with the council. We'd have to just look at our options at that point and consult with the council as to how to proceed.
So would the changes go into effect on the same timeline though? And how would, how would we honor the elected district members?
Yeah, so I think...
Like, how would the implementation work if the charter, like, governance would continue and the elections would have been completed, right? And so then if we're out of sync with a ballot?
Well, I think... So just taking a step back, I think if the council wished to make one of those changes, increasing the number of seats or moving to a directly elected mayor at large, you know, then an ordinance, you know, achieving that would be linked to a future charter amendment passing through, by going to the voters. And then if that measure were to not pass, then, you know, we'd have to simply look at our options at that point and return to the council as to how to proceed with the November 2022 election. I mean, I think in that case, we'd have to lay out exactly what would happen if the ballot measure failed. Would you just continue with the same scenario that would otherwise exist today? Three seats elected at large. But we would have to work through those options. We don't have sort of a completely detailed response at this point, but we would need to, we would spell that out if that is something that the council would be interested in as to what would happen under each scenario, whether the ballot measure would pass or whether it wouldn't pass.
Okay.
If I may follow up, is it that a charter amendment that fails would not overrule an ordinance that the council had already adopted? Is that fair to say?
Well, I think the way I would put it is the two would be linked, right? I mean, if then ordinance approving, say, a change to seven members with a rotational mayor, by way of example, that would be contingent upon the passage of a ballot measure amending the charter. And then if the ballot measure failed, then the ordinance wouldn't go into effect.
So just, sorry, just to return to this question. I'm just confused because in 2022, we will have three seats open. And presumably, there will be candidates running for seats either by district or at-large. And so if we have by-district positions that we're trying to fill and then a ballot measure that is tied to those district seats fails, where does that put those seats legally? Like, what legal status would they hold?
Well, I mean, I think, as part, let me just taking a step back here for a moment. I think as part of this process, we would need to just accommodate, you know, more practical aspects, like, you know, what you mentioned, individuals running for election, having time to run for election. So, you know, one thing we would have to consider is whether, if you wanted to expand the number of seats, then what the timing of that would be in order to allow for candidates to, you know, to plan accordingly. And for this to allow for reconsideration at a future date so that if the ballot measure failed, there would still be time in a future election to pivot to a different system. So in other words, if you're looking at instead of November 2022, if you're looking at, say, a different election date to accommodate, say, an increase in the number of seats and a circumstance where a ballot measure didn't pass, you know, that's something that we could take a look at. This is all by way of saying, we need to, if this is a road the council wants to go down, we need to map out all of those options and the timing of if a ballot measure passes and if a ballot measure fails. I think the city manager has his hand up.
Drew, did you have?
Yes, thank you. Perhaps, Prasanna, if I could ask you a question that might help clarify this. I think that regardless of what the council does in terms of an ordinance, if, for example, the council decided to go to seven council members and a rotating mayor, we would have five council members up through the 22 election, up to the 24 election. Right? So there would be the three, the three by-district seats. And then the two incumbents would remain at large. The transition to seven would occur at the 2024 election. So if there were a situation where a council passed an ordinance that went to the seven and then the voters rejected it, we could revisit that ordinance. Is that, is that a fair assessment, Prasanna?
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a fair, a fair assessment. Thanks for the question. So it would take a, two elections to transition from at-large to by-district elections. And under the charter, there are three council seats that are up for election in 2022. So in the circumstance that the city manager mentioned, if it was seven seats with a rotational mayor, you would have three seats up in November 2022 by district, really, I think, under most foreseeable circumstances. So that if the ballot measure failed, then we would have to revisit the issue at that point to see if the council wanted to, instead of having, you know, the increase in the number of seats, whether to stick with five council seats. But no, you would still end up with three council seats elected by district in November 2022, no matter what. Does that answer your question?
We have a lot more to come, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it would conceivably change districts.
Right.
You had last, so that's, that's okay. Let's go forward for purposes of...
Domino effect.
Did you have any more to add, Drew? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Those great questions. Please continue.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, although the thing in it seems to have changed. Let me just get this set up here. Can you see that properly? That was weird. The PowerPoint didn't allow me just to select one file. It made me draw a box around it. So thanks for having me here. I'm Paul Mitchell with Redistricting Partners. I'm going to go through some basics regarding the California Voting Rights Act, some questions about what districting is, the traditional principles, go through some of the elements so that everybody here and everybody who's watching is kind of on the same page, has the same information and can be active in participating in this process. So the California Voting Rights Act is a law that was passed almost 20 years ago, but has been more rapidly implemented in the last several years. It essentially looks at at-large election systems, those kind of election systems where you vote for three, one election cycle and two, another election cycle or something like that. And it places a responsibility on behalf of the agencies that if they do have underlying racially polarized voting, that they need to convert to a districted election system. And that district election system should be based on the criteria that we'll discuss as we go forward here. The California Voting Rights Act is kind of like the Federal Voting Rights Act in this regard in that the Federal Voting Rights Act could also require an agency to make the same change. But it's a lot looser in terms of its criteria. So in federal law, you hear things like majority-minority. Federal lawsuits, you have to go to the federal courts. There's a lot longer process to do the same thing under the Federal Voting Rights Act. And so that's one reason why the California Voting Rights Act was born, was to help facilitate this transition from at-large to districted election systems. One of the things also that the law does is it guarantees that plaintiffs receive reimbursement for costs when they come forward and submit a demand letter or some other way that they engage with the locality to try to urge them to make that conversion. The fees associated with that and all that are capped if there is a prompt transition to the districted election system. So districting is the initial process of creating these boundaries. In future decades, you'll be doing redistricting. There's certain things that they determine, certain things they don't. So they do determine who is eligible to run for office. You have to be a voter residing in that district. And then it determines who votes in that election. So the voters would only be the voters that are in that district. There are things that it does not by nature determine. It does not determine how the city wants to govern in terms of council members being responsible for different parts of the city or, you know, other kinds of procedural things that you might do as a, as a city council in response to having a districted system. It doesn't change the relationship between the public and the city. It really should be thought of primarily as something that drives the election process. There are some agencies, like where I used to live in Sacramento, where the council members would put on their door, representing the communities of, dot, dot, dot. And that is a decision that they made. It's not requirement of law that the cities think of themselves that way. There's a number of criteria that have been upheld in court cases and are the foundation of a lot of redistricting laws that I'll go through and then talk a little bit about any specifics here in California with regards to local governments. So districts need to be relatively equal size, which means equal numbers of people. It doesn't mean equal numbers of voters necessarily or adult citizens or things like that. It's equal numbers of people based on the decennial census. And the census data we'll be using will be the census that just came out on August 12th and is going to be amended slightly by the California statewide database and released by the state in the next few weeks with some small adjustments for prison population reallocation. But that's the dataset we'll use. It's the decennial dataset. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning that they have to be whole parts. Some cities do have, you know, little islands or parts of the city where there's like an unincorporated part inside of a city, which is also called an island. But aside from those, districts need to be whole pieces. Districts need to maintain communities of interest and I'll dive into that a little bit more here. Communities of interest are defined by law as those socioeconomic demographic communities, areas that have a similar set of interests, areas that have certain characteristics. These can be supported by data. So we can have somebody ask, we want to look at the renter community of interest. And aside from having people come in and talk about it, we could actually look at it in the census data. They can also be subjective. Somebody could be coming forward and saying, actually, my area of renters and people who are in my community of interest live here on this part of the map. And they can provide information that's subjective about their community of interest. And we would want to encourage a real open-ended process to take in information from the public as to how they define themselves without having a lot of, you know, restrictions or any restrictions on the types of testimony that we receive and what we can get as a part of this public process. There are other communities, ethnic language, minority communities that are covered by the Voting Rights Act. Largely in California, you hear about Latinos, Asians, African Americans. We're having the opportunity to work in Alaska this year. And so we're working with Alaskan natives. Then there's also in some other communities, there might be other subgroups that would be covered under this minority community population under the Voting Rights Act. And the Voting Rights Act has a push and a pull essentially. If you have a community that is covered by the Voting Rights Act in your jurisdiction, your legal counsel will tell you that there needs to be certain thresholds that are met with regard to their composition within districts, that you have a responsibility to look at those communities and ensure that you're not diluting their voting power. However, outside of that, that one con, that one instance, outside of that, you are not allowed to use race as a predominant factor in drawing districts. So if somebody was to come forward and talk about their, where they go to church and their cultural amenities and the, you know, bookstore, that's their in-language bookstore and the restaurants that they go to and the school they goes to, that's the bilingual school they go to and all these other elements that have to do with what they are as community members, that's very, very helpful community of interest testimony and can be used to help draw districts to ensure that that community of interest is strengthened in the redistricting process. But if somebody came forward and simply just said what their race or ethnicity was, unless your legal counsel was giving you some pretty significant guidance on it, you'd want to look back to other ways that those communities can be characterized as a cohesive group and a community of interest. Some ideas of communities of interest. I mentioned cultural amenities, religious facilities. It could also be downtown versus urban. In some cities even, like, people identify with where they went to high school. And so maybe they say, well, you know, I went to this high school over there and we don't like the kids who went to that high school over there. And so there's other ways that you can define these communities of interest. And what's really important is that we have a few different elements. We want to have, in these communities of interest, the characteristics of the community of interest, the geographic area of the community of interest, and then the connection to the city within that community of interest. And there are also communities of interest that we are not going to consider. We are not going to consider party affiliation as a community of interest. If somebody said, hey, me and all the libertarians in the whole city moved over to this part of town, we want our own district, we're not allowed to draw a district based on that as a community of interest. We're not allowed to consider incumbents as a community of interest or political candidates. If people come forward and say, me and my buddies, we all want to run for city council and we live in these addresses, that's not something we could utilize as a community of interest. And then also, it's hard, but we'll work on trying to consider every community of interest. But it's hard if somebody were to come forward and say, well, we're a community of interest and we have this shared viewpoint and shared need, but they're not geographically located anywhere. So like a citywide community of interest might not be as effective when you talk about trying to enhance their ability to affect elections geographically. So, you know, my mom's left-handed. She's a community of interest because she has the funny scissors and the can opener and something about the armrest that she likes. But they're not dispersed in one part of town. The community of interest isn't necessarily in one place. And that community of interest doesn't probably have a specific need before the city council. So this is those three questions that we want to really address. Shared culture, ability to be mapped and connection back to the agency. So I'm going to go through some examples for the council members and staff and then also for the members of the community that are watching. It's a great way to think about this when we have the public testimony. So let's say a group of renters who lives downtown testifies to the city council in a redistricting process. Would this be considered a community of interest? So I can see all of you, you want to give me some nods? Yes, no, yep? The answer is yes. A community like that can definitely be mapped. A community like that can definitely be mapped. You can use subjective data to identify that. You can also use some data from the census, some actual numbers. A part of town with a history of racial segregation, housing discrimination, other factors that go back decades, is this a community of interest? And the answer is yeah. Historical aspects of communities, even if it's something that's a policy 20 years ago, that might be in an historical link to some communities as they see themselves now, even though that policy, somebody might say, well, that policy has been changed, that connection is also considered a community of interest. Dog owners, living in the suburbs, and that got the dog park with the little, you know, the little ankle-high water fountain? It's getting a yes and no, a little mixed, maybe a yes, maybe a no. So if this, if the dog park is something that the city set up, and maybe they only set it up in the nice parts of town and didn't set up in the poorer parts of town, then that sure could be a community of interest, because people could say, well, we have a need that's going unmet, or whatever. There's also things like, maybe the group that goes to the dog park, maybe they have a problem with the cracked sidewalks, that they have to walk in the street sometimes because the sidewalks are bad, or they don't have streetlights, and they come back at night from walking the dog, and it's not safe. Or the, the police don't ever like cruise by the dog park, and they're not feeling safe at night. So that can be a community of interest. Now, a statewide group of fans that are Giants fans, really vocal, and they come to the city council for the redistricting, is that a community of interest? And we would say no. Probably not geographically located. But there is a caveat to that. If the city council were looking at building a stadium for the Giants, that might make for a community of interest. And it might make for two communities of interest. It might make one community of interest, there's a community of interest that wants the amenity, that that amenity, community of interest, they want to have revenue from the games, they want to have their friends over, they want to be able to watch the fireworks at night, they want to be able to have concerts they can walk to at the stadium. Then there's probably another community of interest, the one with the negative externalities, the one that has to deal with the, the traffic congestion, the one that has to deal with, you know, drunk people walking through their streets in the middle of the night after a game. The, the negative aspects of the amenity as well can be a different community of interest. You see this a lot. You'll see an airport, on one side is the people who love the airport because it's so convenient, on the other side of the airport is the people that deal with the noise and the flight patterns and noise pollution, and you have people who want that airport to have more flights because it's an amenity for them, and others that want that airport to stop having flights after certain hours, or do different flight patterns, or have other ways that they respect the community. So, communities of interest can also be, you might have somebody coming forward saying, my community of interest is the, the mass transit system. And for some, that community of interest is people who need access to the mass transit, and, and that's their interest. And for other people, it might be people who feel as though the mass transit is, you know, cutting up their neighborhood, or an extension of the mass transit is going to be, you know, causing them to tear down houses in their neighborhood, or something like that. So positive and negative aspects sometimes of those kind of amenities. Now, how can the public communicate this to us? So, one way that can communicate that is in public hearings, verbal testimony, you know, engaging that way, and also using these community of interest forums. Community of interest forums are on the website, and it is part of the engagement strategies to get the public to engage through these simple worksheets that, whether people know it or not, when they're doing it, they're kind of answering those three questions I talked about. There's also online mapping submissions through Districter, which is an online mapping tool. And there are a couple of things that we want in terms of that online mapping. We want people to draw their community of interest. You know, this is my dog-walking community of interest. This is the part of town that had redlining 50 years ago. This is my community of interest, and to draw that. And then, as data gets put up there, that's the final data especially, and we actually will have up the, if we don't already, the 2020 census data, then that data, when that data's up, we want to have people also be submitting draft plans, which means draw a full set of districted lines for the city. The city's using a program called Districter, and we'll be having a little training video on that as well. It's a great tool. It allows you, it's really lightweight tool, and allows you to draw areas in a way that is simple, and can provide people with an opportunity to give real meaningful input. And then the timeline that we're having, we're having these virtual Zoom hearings. Today's August 23rd, so that's that first one right there. And then we're having in-person workshops. And then for more information, you can go to this website, cityofsanmateo.org/districtelections. And with that, I'll go ahead and stop my sharing. And thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Mitchell. And I'll bring it back to the city council for questions. Councilmember Lee.
I think I know the answer, but I wanted to just double-check. Would environmental conditions, for example, like fire risk or flood risk, would that qualify as well?
Absolutely. And there's a lot of discussion, even like in the congressional redistricting right now, about communities that are in the areas that have the fires, right? And they want to make sure that they're protected as a community of interest. And, and yeah, definitely. I mean, and it's also, another thing to think about is that connection back to the local government. So, the environmental issue concern kind of community probably has the most salient redistricting engagement with the local government in the areas in which it actually is managing the policymaking. So, there might be elements of the environmental policymaking where the city has a real role, and those communities of interest would be most strongly, you know, affected by the city redistricting. There's other redistrictings where, like say, a water policy maybe. That might be a water board redistricting, where that would be more salient. And if it's national fire policy, it might be more salient in the congressional district redistricting.
So, so, would it be possible, because there are a lot of people that I, that are, you know, perhaps aren't aware of what environmental hazards they're living with, and so relying on them to identify those things in a community survey seems like a very high bar. And so, and what are the, what are the procedural efforts that, like, where would we then ask to overlay sort of, you know, these analyses on top of the maps and see where we can group together these, these kind of affected communities and align them with the, with the census tracks?
Yeah. So, what's funny is, right as you were talking, a little alert shot of my corner, and it was the head of the CLCV emailing me about this very thing. So groups like CLCV and other organizations are definitely engaging in that way, where they're mapping environmental impacts, whether it's airport noise, asthma rates, you know, different factors that can contribute to those environmental negative externalities that I mentioned, you know? So, and it is, it is true, like, let's say something like lead paint, you know? We might ask people what the issue is with lead paint in their community, they might not know, but there might be a federal database that's mapped it. And so there might be other environmental issues where there is mapping that can be overlaid to the redistricting process.
And so similarly, would we then be empowered as a city to look at what are some of the underlying infrastructure connection points that could also be factored in? And is that something that you're asking us as council to provide direction on, or is that baked into your, your process for mapping?
So some will be baked in. You know, some of the basic census data that's commonly used in redistricting would be, you know, educational level, income, homeowner-renter, you know, some of those factors in addition to the ethnic, language origin, different elements like that that are commonly used in the redistricting process. And then other things end up being part of the community of interest testimony. So when we did Davis's redistricting, we got data from the students that came forward to show where students lived in the bus routes. When we did the redistricting in, in Solano County for the Water District, we had these people come forward with the data showing where the almond farmers were and where the walnut farmers were. And so if there are data sets that are out there that we can be directed to, and they can be either seen, like, next to a map, so people, if they're drawing districts, can have a point of, of relationship between those, or ingested into the dataset, because it's actually, you know, happens to be in the right format to be able to pull that data in, we can work with the city on all, all of that as part of our process.
Great. And so, and just to be so clear, we're not relying on the community of interest to generate all of those ideas, right?
Well, you're absolutely right. The city council members, the staff can be helpful in trying to identify some of that. That's, becomes that objective data and collecting that as much as we can. And then, we do rely a lot in redistricting on the community at least to bring some of these issues to the fore. So, in one of the other redistrictings I'm doing, a community member, one of the first outreach hearings, brought up the redlining issue. So we went and got the redlining maps for that city, and now we're going to be making sure that that is included in the information that the commission in that case gets. So, it is, it's, there are so many communities of interest, it's not that we're going to end up having an exhaustive list of every community of interest. We really want to primarily focus on making sure that all these avenues are available for the public to get engaged, and, and responding to those that, that we can identify. But when do, things do come forward, we'll work really hard to make sure that any data we can get can be incorporated and be, if it's useful in the redistricting process.
Thank you. That's really reassuring.
Do we have any more questions from council? Not seeing any. Okay, well, why don't we open it up to public comment now? And if you could please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, so we could figure out how much time to give. And also, I just want to point out that we received a lot of emails, and if you were one of the ones that, that wrote an email, be assured that we read all the emails that we received, and you do not have to reread the email to us in the interest of time. And I am only seeing two, two hands raised? Three hands raised? All right. Sure, that's only three? All right. We'll do three minutes each.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Wayne Feinstein.
Thank you. I know we haven't discussed this specifically this evening, and I thank you for the presentation. I, I just want to say before I make a specific and pointed comment, I have lived in three large cities that went to redistricting over the last 40 years, New York City, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. And I've never seen the beneficial effects that were promised when it was in public discussion. So I'm simply going to deposit that. Which brings me to the comment. One of the wonderful things about living in San Mateo the last 30 years has been how much of a community it has felt like. And I'd hate to see that lost. If we go to what are now required, many districts throughout the city, it's not a large city. This is not Los Angeles, or San Francisco, or, or Sacramento. But that brings me to a specific that apparently was not on the agenda this evening. I know there has been a proposal floating, and I heard it alluded to in the opening comments, to have district elections in order to enhance district citizen representation, but to do away with the rotating mayor seat, which I think has been one of the really delightful and enhancing benefits of living in San Mateo, because nobody gets a swelled head, everybody is pulling his or her oar in the same direction. We don't have to deal with people who are politically ambitious and assume that being mayor of a small city like San Mateo will enhance their next step. And so, since I'm unable to make the next couple, as I'll be traveling, I, I, I wanted to at least get that on the record, that the idea of retaining the rotating membership for mayor among the district council people, I think will preserve a lot of what has made San Mateo special. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Badge.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So my name is George Derby. Badge is my handle, and my nickname when I was a kid. So, the question I have is, to avoid the potential conflict scenario that was left unresolved at the very beginning of this meeting, why is an election to amend the city charter not held first before an ordinance to change the election process is either formally passed by council or presented to voters for passage? So in that case, this process underway today would be used to inform the city charter change that would precede the actual election process change, and we wouldn't have these unresolved scenarios that would conflict.
So that's a great question, Badge. We'll answer it after.
Uh, George, George.
George. So we'll, we'll answer it at the end of public comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Thank you very much. I think this is a very interesting, informative meeting. I attended the meeting on the 21st of the library, it was also very good. Some of the issues I want to bring up is first, I don't have a problem with either five or seven members. I think that's a decision that the community will make. I do like the idea of an at-large mayor. I think it ties the city together with somebody that's accountable to everybody in the city when it's setting up agendas for the city council. I think that's important. The city's tied together now by all of the city council members. So, that being, I want to talk about community of interest. There are some natural community of interests where I live. We have an organization called Marina Lagoon Action Committee that follows the Marina Lagoon. It would encompass probably almost enough people to make a district that runs from Los Prados to possibly Joinville Park in Shoreview and the pump station on Mariners Island. So that sounds like something that everybody was involved in at one point with the FEMA fight to get out of FEMA, and ties us together with the issues of flooding and the issues, many other issues within the city. So that being said, I would like to hear some more discussion from community members, members on community of interest. I'll end right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Lorraine.
Good evening. Thank you, city clerk, council, and staff. My name's Adam Lorraine. I happen to be a sustainability and infrastructure commissioner with the city of San Mateo, but these comments are mine and mine alone as a private resident of the city. I appreciate this opportunity to be a part of this, and I, I appreciate councilmember Lee's clarifying questions about how we might be getting inputs on community of interest, who's responsible for bringing what to light. And I did just get the impression from the discussion that we may need the public to officially ask for redlining to be considered as something of a community of interest. So I am more than happy to mention this and ask specifically that the council and staff take redlining as, as a community of interest to, to study in this process. In the interest of time, I, I won't explain everything, but I think it's fairly well-known by those in the meeting that, that there is some documentation about the Bay Area having a history of redlining, and, and this city is not exempt from that. And indeed, that would be very important to be part of this process. So I would like to officially ask for that. I'm sure you got a number of emails about it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Rafferty.
Good evening. I just want to start by applauding the city clerk and, and your staff for all the efforts on Saturday to host what I think was at least one successful forum. The participation really wasn't there at the King Center, which of course is, is part of the problem we're trying to fix. But it was a really good effort, and I, I think this is, is the way the process should work. I, I know you're not subject to the procedural requirements of the Fair Maps Act, but to the extent that there are ways to post the written comments you have, so that people can comment on and interact without necessarily having to, to, to speak during public meetings, or at least focus their speech, I think that would be very helpful and increasingly transparent. And finally, I just helpful and increasingly transparent. And finally, I just want to address this issue of the extension. I'm certainly willing to have more hearings as you've scheduled, have it go on for a longer period of time. It means I work harder, and I don't get paid until it's all over, and that's okay. But you do have to make a commitment, a requirement, that you are going to do this. It's really not fair to any of us, including your constituents, to have everybody go through an extended process and still be in suspense about whether you're going through with this or not. You know, we know that you didn't do it a few years ago when it was raised in a less formal way. So, you know, this is part of the process, and I'd ask that you respect the legal requirement that if you do go over time, that you make that kind of irreversible commitment to see it through before the next election. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is call-in user number one. I've allowed you to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. This is Karen Harrell, and I sent you an email, and I'm assuming that you have read that, so I'm not going to go back through that part again. I was very interested to see that at the beginning, various council members wanted to try to get straight in their minds what is going to happen in reference to the city charter versus various changes that are potential underneath the California Voter Act that is driving this process. I think it's important for the council to recognize that this issue is coming up because a legal issue has been brought to you, and that, as the first speaker said, this is not Los Angeles, this is not some huge city. This is a fairly small city where people tend to know each other, and where people tend to know the people who are running for office. As Councilmember Papin indicated originally, if we stay with five council members and we stay with a rotating mayor, then we do not have all of the problems that have been discussed about potential issues if the public does not get the concept when they go to the polls to try to clean up the charter, because it will truly be a cleanup, and the state requirements will overlay what we have in the charter regardless of what it may say. So, I want to strongly say, let us not use this opportunity to comply with the California Voter Act and bring some of our political issues down to a level where people will want to run more and will be able to afford to run more as a smokescreen, so to speak, for bringing in ideas that really have nothing to do with why this issue was brought up. We do not need additional council members. It becomes really unwieldy if you look at what happens in some of the larger jurisdictions. And we really do not need an elected mayor. We've done very nicely with a rotating mayor, as I pointed out in my email to you. It gives each part of the city an opportunity to have that leadership for a year, which is really an important spotlight on what different parts of the town need. So, your most straightforward thing, and what would be the least confusing to the members of the public as they try to go through this, is to say, we are taking our current imprint, which has been established through the voters in the charter and has worked for years and years and years, and we are going to bring that forward into a district concept without expanding the numbers, without confusing people about what a mayor does, et cetera. And so, I strongly urge you to put that on the record now, so we can all concentrate on what it is we're going to move forward to in terms of how these districts should look. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have no other speakers.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, okay, so I had one question from George that was, I think it was addressed to our city attorney about, you know, why aren't we going to the voters first before we do anything to our city charter?
Sure. So, under the California Voting Rights Act, you know, there is a safe harbor period where one can go through the district elections process and then minimize legal costs and really act in a fairly speedy way so as to protect the city from future litigation. And the city has been going through that process by adopting a resolution intent within 45 days of getting a certified letter from Mr. Rafferty, and then that gave us an additional 90 days in which to act. We have been working on an additional 90-day extension, which has not come to fruition thus far. But this is a very time-constrained process, and there's not sufficient time to bring a charter amendment to the voters and still act within that safe harbor period. So, that's really the, I think, primary motivation here. I think perhaps in the past and other jurisdictions, that could have occurred before the California Voting Rights Act was enacted, but it's a timing issue.
Thank you for that. Okay, so, I was going over the staff report, and it says, the purpose of this meeting is to, of course, here, begin the public discussion. And it says, the city council is asked to receive public input and begin discussion on the preferences for the composition by district elections. Is anything more than that? Do you want us to start giving us our initial thoughts on directions we'd like to see, or maybe some paths we'd like to see cut? Is that what would be most helpful for staff at this point?
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, I'm not seeing a lot of hands, so I'll kick things off. And I guess I'll just start off by saying that, you know, we've gotten many, many emails about the idea of having an at-large mayor. And I will say, for the most part, I mean, I might disagree with some of the specific reasons. I agree with many of those emails. And I just want to talk about a couple of reasons why. I mean, running for citywide office in San Mateo, now the largest city in the county, by the way, easily requires raising upwards of $100,000 for first-time candidates to have a realistic chance of running a competitive race, especially against an incumbent. And by dividing the city up in the districts, that will lower that barrier considerably for new candidates to run. And that, to me at least, is the single best argument on why this is a good idea to move forward. But if we decide to install an at-large mayor, we are significantly diminishing that biggest benefit, and essentially saying that for the most important elected position in our city, you would still need to raise over $100,000, and that could be even more if it's just one position, to successfully challenge incumbent mayor. I mean, would it go up to $150,000, $200,000? That, to me, is a race, a trend that we've been seeing, and it's a trend that I prefer not to see continue. As was alluded to by, I think, one of the speakers and definitely a lot of our emails, out of the 20 cities in San Mateo County, only one directly elects their mayor, San Bruno, and some residents are really trying to reverse that. In the last 20 years, they have only had three different mayors, and that's 20 years. And the current mayor will likely serve several more. So, that basically means it's like one mayor per decade, and that doesn't sound like San Mateo. That doesn't seem like the best path for San Mateo for me. Another major benefit of having district elections is that it helps with geographical representation. But at-large mayor diminishes that by, because under, if we had five districts and kept the rotating mayor, each neighborhood or region would have a council member who lives in that region, and eventually will have the honor and privilege of serving as mayor from that neighborhood. The mayor position would rotate around the city, giving everyone and every region an equal chance over a five-year timeframe. And as one of the speakers suggested, well, that was as one of the speakers suggested, and also, we would get five districts rather than four, and that would give us greater flexibility in placing the common interest communities together. So, for example, Mr. Hedges mentioned the water-facing communities could be a single community of interest. Well, maybe under 20% of San Mateo, but could it be under 4% and 25%? That just makes it a little bit more challenging. And I know our school district is undergoing some of those very issues as we speak, with community of interest being diluted by other areas, and they're afraid that some votes are going to be kind of taken away from different interest groups. Okay, last is the optics of creating an at-large mayor position. You know, throughout this transition to districts, the public needs to trust that we, the city council, are not going to give ourselves unfair advantage, whether it be choosing favorable district boundaries or otherwise stacking the deck in our favor. And we want everyone to have an equally fair chance to run for these seats. If we create an at-large mayor, there is a very high chance that one of the first likely long-serving mayors will be one of us five council members, because all of us have an advantage of already having run for citywide office, and anyone else would have a real uphill battle. And so, even if it's not the intention, and I'm not suggesting it is, if we move that way, the optics of that move makes it look like we are stacking the cards in our favor, and it would look as though we are putting our own political ambitions before, like right now, ahead of San Mateo's best long-term interest. Now, we are, as another speaker talked about, we are currently going through a lot in our city. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We are in the middle of a once-in-a-decade general plan update. We are in the middle of the most significant changes in our entire 127-year history to how we elect our council members. Why would we want to throw another moving part that's unnecessary at best, and it could be a big step backwards at worst? We are a charter city. If we want to make this change, let's not do it in a rushed manner and throw it in. Let's do it in a more longer-term piecemeal way. That's my thoughts on that. I probably prefer sticking with five different districts, but I would be open to exploring seven personally, because I think that we don't know how the different community interest groups are going to be breaking down. Thank you for bearing with those comments. And anybody else like to weigh in on this? Don't all raise your hand at once. Deputy Mayor?
Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
So, I would like to say that, first, that I think it's of the utmost importance that the council engages in the best public process possible with as much public input as we can possibly find. I'm happy to see that we received a lot of letters. I think we could have received a lot more. But I would, I know there's a great diversity of opinion out there, and this is a serious issue, one amongst many, and the issues that we are facing. And, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned right now the once-in-a-generation general plan update. It's a huge deal. And we're looking at the numbers that have come to us from the State Housing and Community Development Department, and through the Rena process with our housing element, this is going to require major attention to be able to make it work to the best possible public outcome. And so, with that in mind, I want to say that I also feel that seven districts is acceptable to look at. I would encourage us to look at five or seven districts, either one. And this all depends on the results of data that we're going to examine, coming from the census data, the communities of interest info received, and any other public, you know, comment and information that we receive from many different sources. We need to do a thorough and vigorous research on all of this information. I am supportive of keeping the rotating mayor. I think it's a system that's worked well in San Mateo for many years, and I think that we're actually known for having good, consistent, level-headed government in San Mateo. I don't think we should try to rock that boat. Nothing, you know, no judgment about other cities that do it differently, but I just feel this would be the best for the city of San Mateo, as many people seem to feel. But that's, as you know, not what really affects me. I just think, in my own mind, as an elected leader, that this is the best choice. So, I want to keep in mind the unprecedented climate-related challenges that we face with sea level rise and all of the other issues that I constantly bring up. I know they are creating separate, different, I think, community of interest issues, that we need to be sure and capture all of them. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Who would like to go next?
I have a question instead of comments, as, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me. And this goes more to Mr. Mitchell. In my mind, I'm trying to reconcile how racially polarized voting and this community of interest kind of come together, because you gave us a very broad menu, if you will, of what types of things can be community of interest. But that doesn't seem, they don't always seem to be related, I guess, to racially polarized voting. Is that right?
Yeah. So, this is a very sensitive issue, so I'm going to talk a little bit about policy and my experience, then I'll hand off to legal counsel to kind of dive into anything where we get into like some of the more legal parts of it. So, first off, the California Voting Rights Act does create this responsibility for agencies at a threshold of, you know, could this community of interest influence the outcome of an election? That's a term that's in the California Voting Rights Act that speaks to the effectiveness, the voting power of a minority community that is less or lower than the threshold that's generally utilized in the federal Voting Rights Act. So, there's a little bit more liberal interpretation of what can cause you to go into this districted election system. Now, a lot of agencies look at that, and the law itself kind of looks at that and says, well, when you're drawing districts, you should draw districts being sensitive to those same issues that got you into the position of needing to convert to the districted system at the same, you know, at all. But then we walk into issues where somebody says, well, we are now in this situation of drawing districts. How do we maximize the voting power of these communities? And it's important that you don't misstep and accidentally tread into something that could inadvertently be a violation of people's equal protection, in that you're not drawing districts solely based on or predominantly based on race, even though, so it's very kind of tricky to figure out how to do all those things at once. Before I pass off to legal counsel, I'll give one, I'm not your attorney, but I'll repeat something that an attorney once said. So, Justin Levitt, who is now legal counsel in the White House, used to do our legal presentations for the redistricting process. We really benefited from having him do these. It was great. And one of the things he said about race in redistricting was, think of it as when you're driving, that it's the speedometer. So, when you're driving, you need to every once in a while be aware of how fast you're going. But if you only drove and just stared at your speedometer and didn't look at anything else, you'd crash. So, you know, you want to be looking at the cyclist in the intersection, the red lights, and the speed limit, and everything else. And the speedometer is one of the tools that can be utilized as a part of that process, but it can't be the predominant or only way to engage in it. So, at that point, I don't want to exceed my role here, and I'll pass off to legal counsel to give a little bit more legal advice on that.
Sure. And, Dan, did you have another comment? No, okay. So, just to continue with the metaphor here, I know I agree with everything Paul has mentioned. Race cannot be the driving factor, right, if we're using this phenomenon metaphor? Yeah, under U.S. Supreme Court case law, race cannot be the predominant factor in crafting districts, because if you do that, then you risk an equal protection violation under the Fourteenth Amendment that could trigger strict scrutiny by the courts. The courts will look at, well, if that's the only, if that's the overriding factor that you're considering, then we need to, you know, look at, you know, what are the other, what is the compelling state interest that's driving this? And what is the specific evidence of past discrimination that could possibly justify, you know, that kind of line drawing? So, it's a really high burden to reach, and it's rarely if ever reached. And so, that is why in crafting districts, it is, race is appropriately one factor to consider, because there are also historical concerns about not, and to use terms of art under the federal Voting Rights Act, there's no packing and no cracking, right? There's no, one cannot, you know, pack members of protected classification, you know, into one voting district when perhaps they will be able to vote, be a majority in more than one district. And also, one cannot And also, one cannot, in drawing districts, divide up, say, members of protected class into multiple districts so that they will be unable to elect a candidate of their choice. So in doing that, you know, one is considering race as as a factor in order to avoid going the other direction and discriminating against protected classifications. And race can all, race can also be woven into sort of other other factors that are listed in the communities of interest, that slide that Paul indicated. So this is all by way of saying, it's a line you have to walk. You don't kind of focus on the speedometer and to the exclusion of everything else. But it's something that needs to be carefully and appropriately considered to avoid going too far one direction or the other. I'm going to stop there and see if anyone has questions.
I don't really have a question. It's just, it's sort of incongruous to me that you're taking this on because there there's an issue with racially polarized voting. And yet, curing racially polarized voting may not be what should drive your solution here completely. And so in the end run, maybe you don't end up solving racially polarized voting. I don't know. We'll keep, I like the analogy of keeping it on your eye on the speedometer. I mean, that certainly makes a lot of sense. But anyway, it's just an interesting dichotomy that we have to kind of deal with here. And as far as the menu that was presented of, what is it, community of interests? We have a lot that we can work with here. Not the least of which is that this city is divided by a major highway. And I think that that's something we will really have to take into account here. What did you say, Rick? Talk to me.
He's on mute.
Go on mute, Rick. Sorry, I said two major highways, actually.
That's right, that's right. And and one of the Highway 101 certainly has, to your point, Rick, a lot of flood and sea level rise concerns that we tried to tackle before. But in any event, I thank you for that sort of conceptual understanding, because I was trying to, you know, bring them together in my mind. And what I'm hearing is they're not totally together, but we'll work with it. I get it. So I appreciate that. Thank you for the education, as it were.
Thanks for the great clarifying, clarifying, clarifying questions. Councilmember Lee, you have some comments or questions or whatever.
Thanks. I, let's see. Well, before we, before we jump into some of the possible formats, I was wondering, is it, would it be appropriate to give some suggestions about the outreach strategy?
I'm seeing some of it, so.
I think all of that's on the table tonight. It isn't necessarily that we're deciding certain things, so I welcome it.
Great. Well, I applaud the efforts of the city and especially under the constraints of time. And I, there's most certainly, you know, all systems firing and, you know, the best of intentions to do the most robust outreach that we can do. And and I would just add a suggestion. I think that with with some of our hard-to-reach community members, attending a workshop is practically speaking very challenging with people who are, you know, just don't have the privilege of time. And so I would really appreciate incorporation of sort more of like a one-on-one canvas approach where we go to places like the North Central bus stop and have, you know, have paid canvassers who are ready on site to help people fill out in language the community interest survey. And that we get their input immediately. And it's not that we're, we're putting in all this effort to get a flyer to people to ask them to attend a meeting at a later date. I think that we could better leverage those points of contact by making sure that we have that we're collecting input and feedback immediately and on the spot and in language. And I could see many opportunities to do that in my community of North Central. And, you know, in partnership with with hip housing and and some of the other, you know, the faith communities and the inroads that we've made through the general plan outreach process. So that would be my, you know, my overarching recommendation is to allow some capacity and space to incorporate you know, one-on-one, supported survey completion in language on in targeted areas.
Do you have any other comments on the the different alternatives or?
Yes, I do. So personally, I feel that extending the number of seats of the council would be concerning, because I think that it could further fragment communities. And I, one of the things that I really appreciate about the way that we govern now is that there is, you know, vested interest in in finding consensus and looking at problems holistically, which allows for and provides a more rich ground for collaboration and consensus building. And so for me personally, I would not support expanding the council. I agree with Ms. Harrell and Mr. Feinstein that I don't think that the size of our city or even the number of neighborhoods warrants expansion of council seats. And then lastly, I think, you know, I just, to be perfectly explicit about, you know, my hope for for some of the data points that I would like to see incorporated when we're looking at communities of interest is specifically looking at where renters are concentrated, where community, immigrant communities, those who are linguistically isolated, high concentration of those who are housing insecure or living in overcrowded housing conditions. As Commissioner Lorraine mentioned, factoring in the history of redlining and and for sure, the environmental conditions and some of the underlying infrastructure ties to certain neighborhoods and and community boundaries. So those, that's, those are my comments for now.
Any thoughts on at-large mayor?
You know, I think I can see the pros and cons of the, of of considering an at-large mayor. Some of the pros that I've thought about are the opportunity to give every single voter a chance to vote for two people, which I I think is, you know, is an advantage. I do see the potential of an at-large mayor supporting more of the consensus-building facilitation that that I think is important to governance. And and then potentially it could help position us for broader regional strategic representation on some of the the regional boards and commissions. So for those reasons, I think that there is an upside. I also see the upside of maintaining our current system. And in all the ways that you laid out, Mr. Mayor, I I think you did a very great job of explaining what we're doing well and why and why the system currently works. So I'm, I don't, I don't have very strong opinions one way or another. But I think it's worth considering. We have gotten a lot of opinions about why it shouldn't be considered. I I would be interested from sort of an operational perspective, you know, what what Drew would have to say in terms of like how, you know, how he would weigh, you know, what he, what your thoughts are and feedback are about, you know, the differences, if we're missing any of any perspectives that we should be taking operationally in terms of the way that we work with you and how a different structure could look. And and I mean, I'm interested in to hear more from the community also. I think that there, there's loud voices for no, but I would hope that we would allow for some discourse and dialogue to to also weigh up why, you know, why this should be a consideration.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next with any comments or more questions? Okay, Councilmember Goltos.
So I'll chime in on a couple of the things that we talked about. I I appreciate the direction that we're going in. I think that the outreach strategy that we have so far is good. I think that we've been well-served by what we have done so far. And I think that the council has been very representative of the entire city. But I understand the state law and the pressure that we are under in order to move in this direction. So going to district representation will be, will be different. I don't think that it's been all positive, whether it's at the county level or in other cities that have adopted districts. But it certainly gives people a louder voice when it comes to their representative. I do think that a lot of people will be disappointed that they won't get to vote for every single council member. In that regard, we heard from voices already like Chris Conway, who felt like two council members is the minimum that any constituent should get to vote for. I also have heard from a lot of constituents who understand that San Mateo having a loud voice at the table when it comes to the regional boards that we sit on is very important to bringing those San Mateo dollars back home. We pay taxes to all different levels of government. And bringing those dollars back to San Mateo is one of the essential things that we do. If there's anything that having a strong mayor, an at-large mayor in in San Bruno has shown us, it's that it has brought them federal dollars back to San Bruno. When when Jim Ruane was the mayor there, he went and testified before Congress after their San Bruno fire and was able to bring back significant amounts of money, millions of dollars to rebuild their their community after the tragedy that they suffered. So there are positives to having an at-large mayor. Residents get to vote on at least two council members. You have a larger regional voice that brings money back to San Mateo. I've always understood those arguments. I I think that it's, it's worth continuing to consider. I think that the benefits, San Mateo's the largest city in in San Mateo County. We deserve to have the infrastructure dollars come back to San Mateo so we can build those great separations, so that we can build our clean water program, the wastewater treatment plant. Our streets, our roads should all be repaved. Those are the kinds of things that I think is a, an at-large mayor could help San Mateo to do. I don't think the average person has even thought about this. Most residents haven't even thought about this issue yet. So it's something that I I'll continue to talk to residents about. A lot of residents, when I talk to them, they completely understand what the benefits are. So we'll see. We'll see how residents feel as we go through the process. Those are my thoughts. I would not expand to seven. I think five is is enough. I understand the reasons why some people think seven might work. I would keep it to five right now. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Any thoughts, Councilmember Pepin?
Got a lot of thoughts. I don't have many conclusions, but I got a lot of thoughts. So let me, first of all, I I concur with Councilmember Goltos about how I think we have had very good, broad representation in this city. And but we are confronted with going to district elections. I have my reservations about them, especially as it relates to this idea of, you know, balkanization and, well, I'm only representing my neighborhood, and this is what happens in my neighborhood. I'm, you know, this is a city of a hundred and some odd thousand people. And I worry about folks getting elected without keeping in mind that entire city perspective. This is what we're confronted with. And so I think as it relates to outreach and getting through this procedure, I welcome every opportunity to speak with people. I think it's an excellent idea to go to a bus stop. I think it's an excellent idea to get to Caltrain. I think it's an excellent idea to get to some parks. Just catching people in their everyday lives, because it is hard for them. I don't care who you are. You've got to have a lot of extra time on your hand to come to these meetings or workshops or whatever it may be. So I'm certainly willing to do my part if you if you need me to do some outreach. But if we need targeted outreach in another language, I won't be able to help. I can stand there, but I probably won't be able to help language-wise. But I, I think we will have to do some going to, going to greet, meet people where they are as it relates to the outreach. And I applaud the efforts that have been implemented thus far. It has been a collective effort in the city, and it has been so impressive to watch. And the earnestness with which staff has come to this to try to comply with the law, to do it with the most robust amount of outreach and information has been tremendously impressive. Mr. Mitchell, we know you are the one because, and you're busy at this time, so we really appreciate your involvement, certainly. As it relates to the number of 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 seats, I didn't understand that we were going to be deciding that tonight. As I understood it, that's part of the continued workshop, and we will discuss it as well as the mayor-at-large. I recognize all the arguments that have been made. And I received all the letters. I read them all. And there are certainly folks that don't want it. And I can understand that. And certainly, there are attributes to being, having a rotating mayor. But I didn't understand we're going to decide that tonight either. So as I understood, when we saw the slides tonight, it was let's come back on the 13th. Is that right? For those issues.
We're not deciding anything. We're just giving our initial thoughts.
Okay.
Wrote it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't sure of where we were headed with it. So, you know, I'm not gonna I'll see where it lands. I'll see after we get some additional input on it. I've appreciated and understood the input we've gotten thus far. And I I'll see on the 13th where we land on it and after we get some additional input. But I appreciated all the letters and I understand the arguments, certainly, as to why we should keep what we have. And we'll have further discussion and let's see where it goes. That's kind of where I am on it. But that's it for me, unless you need anything more.
Think that's good. I saw your hand briefly up, Drew. Did you have any additional comments or any other, any other topics you'd like us to talk about?
No, I didn't. You you answered the question I was going to answer, which is that we wouldn't be making any decisions tonight. And I don't, I don't have anything further. I think we have what we need, and we're going to just continue with the outreach process, taking into consideration what we heard tonight. And we will be back for our second public hearing on September the 13th.
So if I may, how many workshops are you going to have between now and then where some of these issues might be further discussed?
We have we have I think that we won't have any other formal outreach until the 25th, which is after, when the the maps are ready or the maps are available. So the the outreach now will be not formal meetings, but just the general outreach that we're doing to continue to try to get people involved, which will incorporate sort of what we heard tonight.
Councilmember Lee.
Can I just clarify? Are are you asking, or do you need council consensus about the direction? Or do you feel like there's, like, is this, or are we just giving input and then you incorporated operationally as needed?
The latter. I think we have what we need.
Okay.
Just teeing up the conversation that's gonna, gonna be going on and for a number of weeks. So I think we did, I really appreciate everybody's participation. A lot of great questions, a lot of great points. Thank you to the public for your involvement. Tell your neighbors, your friends to to get involved as well. That's going to be the way this is going to end up the best for our city. And if that's no other And if that's no other comments and questions, then I think we're, we're done, and I'll adjourn this meeting.